About meeting order and rise pretty pleasantly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Susie, roll call please.
Councilmember Groves, here. Councilmember Chambers, here.
Councilmember Salisburyville, here.
Councilmember Jankovic, yes.
And Mayor DeGore, here.
Consent agenda, I would like to add number E on their new business. I have a proclamation for public service month 2023. It's in February, so I'd like to knock that out tonight.
Would that up, would that, did you know? Who can get that today?
I'll support. Any other discussion or changes?
We're good for now, yeah.
Susie.
Councilmember Groves, yes. Mayor DeGore, yes. Councilmember Salisburyville, yes. Councilmember Jankovic, yes. And Councilmember Chambers, yes.
Public comment. Yes. Everybody wants me to rehearse? Sometimes I miss you when you're gone.
Good. Perry Beecham and I reside at 924 Riverside Drive. Couple of different things, two things I want to talk about. One is the Scout Park. I sat on the parks for over thirty years. And I don't know if it's misinformation or different things, there are different comments that are floating out in the community. I just want to, I guess, put my two cents in. There was one time Sharon Ellison came to the parks and wanted to know if the property became available, where the line shack, old line shack was in the, in the house, that would they, would we accept that into the parks? And we basically said, yes. But, and there was a but there, is as long as it doesn't cost us anything and as long as, or that you're going to put money with that property, because there are, there are costs involved, and I don't care what you're doing. Things that we have done up there at the time with the parks, we, there were old, there were flight posts on the, on the, on the city main street, and they're being used as posts up there with the steel cable. We felt that wasn't safe, so we directed at the time, and as during the DPW, if they could clean it up, tear it, take that down. So whether you put that property back into that, there's, there's still going to be a cost involved. That also, I know that there's a new parks plan tonight, so maybe some of those things are addressed. The, some of the things that we talked about at that Scout Park, and it was, when I was on it, it was known as the North Washington property. And we had a contest, and we thought that we should name it, and Scout Park came, came up as one of them. The Scout Cabin is only a small little portion of that as being park property. We felt at that time that, that all citizens of the city Lowell and the community should be able to use that property. It's a beautiful piece of property for trails, different things. We also talked about, and I, I know that some neighbors didn't want that at the time, might be different now, but we talked about that maybe there should be, if we're going to do that, that there should probably be appropriate parking, be handicap accessible, bathrooms. So those are just some of the things that were talked about. So when, when it said that, I think the, the final word comes from the council, so that's what they have the responsibility. But as a, as a board commission, we made recommenda, we made recommendations, and at the time was, that was as far as any discussion ever happened at the parks level. Might have been different discussions at the city council, but at parks, that was it. So just wanted to, I mean, I would be in favor of that property being in there, but again, you have to, the citizens have to understand, there is a cost that's involved. And currently, we have, the city of Lowell has more parks per capita park property than most, any other community in the state of Michigan. So we have a lot, we have a lot of parks. Secondly, I wanted to talk about the Arbor Board. And I'm going to throw this out and asking whether we should dissolve the Arbor Board and not be a tree city here in Lowell. I'm being a little facetious, but again, we were supposed to have a meeting this last Monday, seven o'clock in the morning, and it was canceled. And it was rescheduled for March thirteenth. I talked to most of the members that are on the Arbor Board. Talked to Jim, I talked to Jim Reagan, which is the chairman. I talked to Ryan Teachworth, which attends through, because of Lowell light and power, and couldn't get any, no one had been contacted of why we're canceling it. And I just, I don't have a problem with canceling it, but I do, it diminishes the value of groups, the Arbor, particularly the Arbor Board, when the chairman of that, which is Jim Reagan, is not asked or not discussed, all of a sudden the meeting's just, just canceled. And I, and I would say, so the Arbor Board, this is what says on the, on our website. The Arbor Board is responsible to study, investigate, counsel, and develop, annually update and administer a written plan for the care, preservation, pruning, replanting, removal or disposition of trees and shrubs in public parks, along public streets and roads within public right of ways and within other public areas. So, thank you.
Thanks very much. Anybody else? Closing public comment. Old business number A, Parks and Rec Plan, A.
Evening, Mayor and Council. A long, long, long process is over. We started about this time last year of updating our Parks Recreation Plan. A lot of work involved with that. I think you guys seen all the information on that over the last few meetings. Review period for the draft Recreation Plan was completed. Council is being asked how to hold the final public hearing on the document. Included with, with my memo, the few comments that we received during that thirty day period. And then after conclusion of the public hearing, council is asked to approve our resolutions zero two dash twenty-three to adopt the, the plan. So once the plan is adopted by council, our, our engineers have till the end of the month to get it on the desk of, of the EQ, or the DNRME for, by the end of, end of the month. And that's where we're at today. Unfortunately, Tanya from Olive Zorx could be here. We have Andy, if you have any questions on, on the document or, or anything like that. But again, there's a lot of work, a lot of meetings, a lot of public input, surveys, meetings with certain groups, and I think, I think the master plan that was developed is something that I think our community here can grasp a hold of and move forward with.
Thanks, Dan. With that, we'll open a public hearing for the Parks and Recreation Plan for 2023 to 2027. Welcome, any public comment?
Mary Covert, 982 North Washington. I, I appreciate all the time and effort that I know the Parks and Recreation Commission put into their five year plan. I am disappointed, though, I need to admit, that there is nothing in it concerning the completing of the preservation of the remainder of the Scout Park property. As we all know, there were council members unseated fifteen years ago when Sharon Ellison was elected by a landslide, when she ran on that platform to, to complete the preservation. And they even thought that was accomplished. And now, of course, we still realize that there are still more than four acres of road frontage, as well as the river frontage, not officially protected as part of Scout Park. And I felt that that should have been part of the, the five year master plan. And then I, I want to say, I understand Mayor DeGore is frustrated and seems upset with concerned citizens for unfounded rumors concerning the property. And yet it seems to me that a lot of that has come from city leaders themselves. There have been many confusing and contradictory comments coming from various city leaders, as well as refusal to answer direct questions over the past year. I'm also concerned about the Parks and Rec page on the city's own website. Now, I haven't checked it in the past couple of weeks, but as of a couple of weeks ago, even though Scout Park has been an official named city park for several years now, the property is still listed on the website as Washington Street property, as Perry had mentioned, and then slash Boy Scout Cabin. So that to me, knowing what I know about past talk and actual plans for small and large development of this area over the past number of years, that's suspicious to me, that that has never really been updated to call it Scout Park. And then also suspicious is that we've seen several maps giving different parameters and outlines of the actual Scout Park, and no one from the city seems to know for sure what is actually protected and what is not. We've asked several different people, and we've gotten different comments on that. And when concerned citizens are left wondering, then rumors are to be accepted. And according to the results of the recent parks survey, still a major desire of the people responding to this day was to preserve natural green space. Now, as Perry mentioned, and I remember the survey that was done a number of years ago, that checked out all the parks and compared where we stand as far as the parks are concerned with other communities. But they also pointed out at that time that the majority, and I think all the parks except for Scout Park, are developed parks, having to do with, you know, the, the different ball, ballparks and that kind of thing, and playgrounds and all. And so Scout Park, as far as I know, is the only natural green space park. And with this in mind, I hope that the new five year master plan would have included at least some ongoing proposal to bring this intention to fruition. I had hoped that there would be, continue to be a process for the complete preservation of the entire property surrounding the now designated Scout Park, as was the intention of the city council in 2007. And this should include wording to preserve the parks, in the park system, the entire acreage and parcels surrounding Scout Park, including the 990 North Washington and all other road and river frontage surrounding that park area. So, and I know you probably need to adopt that, that plan, and I know they put a lot of work into that, but I would still ask that it not be adopted until there's something in there to that effect. And this might also include requests for proposals for possible funding options, like Perry mentioned. There, there shouldn't be much, if any, cost to it being just a natural park, but if there is, then there should be possible funding options, as has been accomplished for the Riverwalk, Fairgrounds, Showboat, and now a park with a slash pad. And this totally unique and irreplaceable property deserves no less. So with that in mind, I'd ask that it not be adopted as the completed plan at this time. Thank you. May I pass these to councilmembers? Thanks.
Anybody else on the Park Master Plan? All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor DeGore, I do have a few letters to read, then, to record.
Go with him.
Such a lovely area for us to bring our grandchildren to see and explore the trees, waters, birds, and the animals. A lot of children grew up in the city without an area to walk or play, only cement blocks and trails. What a wonderful, what a wonder for kids to see and enjoy. How can these kids develop memories for their future generations? A lot of these kids don't know how to act in such an open space. Lowell folks will appreciate this if you really think it over, get some of their input, that's why we live in Lowell. The Scout Camp is important to our boys of Lowell. They enjoy camping, campfires, activities throughout the pines, without interruptions from new homeowners. Oh yes, the owners will agree, there won't be a problem. After they move in, it's a different story. Too many boys, too much noise, late into the evening, and campfire smoke making them sick. As the farmers, what they put up with when these folks bought in the country, complaints started. Let's keep nature as it is. These animals and birds will thank you. Besides, the Boy Scouts may become important men someday, like our Gerald Ford did. One of those big modern homes would look out of place in our natural city. Mary Ann Gelderswa, 125 Bowes Road. I have two more. I support the Lowell Scout Park Association's efforts to preserve Lowell's unique property alongside the Flat River with access to all, and I recommend including related nearby areas of historical and cultural interest. My grandmother, Sue Hausman, lived on a farm near the Scout Cabin, and so as a boy, I would explore the woods near the cabin. I played in foxholes that some older kids had kindly dug for their enjoyment in that wonderful stand of pine trees south of Scout Cabin. In the 1950s, my father, Howard Thirtell, and my mother, Ruth Hausman Thirtell, Lowell High School, thirty-eight, bought ten acres directly south of the pine forest. In those pines, I watched a baby great horn owl perching on a Lowell pine branch until its mama chased me away. We poked around the banks of the Flat River near the Scout Cabin and discovered submerged wooden planks that we imagined were part of a long forgotten grist mill. Our neighbor, Bill Covert, from Lowell High School, fifty-nine, and I would borrow a tippy old canoe from the Scout Cabin. We called the canoe Old Suicide, because it was easy to capsize, which we often did, and deliberately. We would float first feet, we would float feet first, and feeling something hard, stand up and grab the canoe. Why was there something to stand on in the middle of the channel? And what was the purpose of that rock and mortar wall that connected to nothing except the West Bank? In winter, I would look beyond the leafless trees and see an old house that I assumed was part of a farm. Across the river, a trail starts alongside the Scout Cabin and winds high above the flat's east bank. Devil's Peak was a small cleared space of rough clay where one summer night, three of us spread sleeping bags and then looked down. The drop was long and interrupted by lethal looking trees. We aimed our feet at the edge and tried not to roll in our sleep. Many years later, that house I mentioned was a bed and breakfast where we stayed. I learned that a long time ago, the caretaker of a hydroelectric dam lived there. The ground sloping toward the river is full of clam shells. It was the bottom of the dams impoundment. Those things we marveled at as kids, the satinwood planks, the rock wall, the hard object I stood on in the channel. Those things were parts of what this long defunct hydro plant. Townspeople pitched in to build the Scout Cabin. It is an example of community cooperation. These structures, including the pump station house, tell us how residents worked in bringing amenities, such as electricity and water, to their community. The remnants of that old power plant are part of the technical, technological history of Lowell, and really of the entire country. Downstream from the cabin, there's a seasonal village of Native Americans. The trail to Devil's Peak was part of an ambiguous pathway that connected the future Lowell area with the entire state and beyond. Old Suicide was far from the first canoe to travel that flat. I can't help but asking, what caused the hydro plant to fall into ruins? The area is rich in archaeological and historical significance. I support developing Scout Park along lines that encompass research, education, presentation, and recreation on an expanded site. I am opposed to any action that would destroy this treasure. Yours truly, Joel Thirtell. And the last one. I was fortunate to grow up in Lowell between 1945 to 1960. Returning World War II veterans provided essential leadership to revitalize scouting in Lowell. Many did not even have their sons of their own, but recognized the value, the community value of strong youth programs. In those days, almost every boy in town joined the Cub Scouts at age eight, and then Boy Scouts at age eleven. Scout Master Goldie Rivet, a wartime pilot, was much loved by all the boys for his jovial spirited and principled leadership during weekly meetings and Grand Valley regional scouting events. Key leaders were Charles Hill, Reverend Philip Gomatfeldy, Jim Druger, Maya Covert, Al Dalstra, and Eddie Lauks. Many others, including churches and the Lowell Rotary Club, provided important community support. In 1952, when I joined Troop 102, we weekly, our weekly scout meetings were on Monday nights at the Methodist Church gym or at Lowell City Hall upstairs. Both our leaders had a grand vision of activity centers for Lowell Scouts, a spacious pine cabin north of town, up Washington Street, beyond a cemetery on the east bank of Flat River. To raise money, Lowell Scouts organized numerous community-wide paper drives, gathering old newspapers from residents' homes, filling a big semi trailer to sell to the Grand Rapids paper recycling orders. Those funds, plus donated materials from Lowell businesses and volunteer labor on weekends and evening, evenings by tradesmen, scout leaders, and the boys themselves, made that dream come true. Lowell had a unique scouting asset that few other communities could match. The large pine cabin featured a magnificent stone fireplace at the north end and a smaller enclosed office, two restrooms, and a service kitchen at the south end. Three full-size canoes were hung from the ceiling, ready for paddling on the nearby Flat River. A riverside hiking trail meandered northward through the heavily wooded east bank that slowly moved in shallow stream. As boys, we played capture the flag amidst the straight geometric rows of adjacent pine trees. And on many summer nights, after our explorer post meetings, we formed into crews and raced those canoes down to, downstream to Christensen's Drug Store on Main Street Bridge for fifteen cent ice cream sodas, sodas. Losers buy for the winners. With our own river to practice on, Lowell Scouts won first place in the Grand Valley Council's Team Canoe Relay Races in 1955, fifty-six, and fifty-seven. Over the next seventy years, this beloved Boy Scout Cabin and its grounds have served numerous community needs and youth activities. In 1960, I was a counselor for grade schoolers attending summer camp at the cabin, sponsored by the Lowell's newly established YMCA. Unfortunately, I later developed appendicitis and never finished that summertime work experience. This was just the beginning of many more Scout Park events and memories down through the decades since. In closing, I urge the citizens of Lowell, through their elected city council, to now maintain and expand this unique historic Scout Park area, preserving its pristine natural wilderness for future generations of Lowell families, even for seventy more years from now. If we don't, it will truly be a loss forever. Sincerely, Ab Thaler.
Thanks, Susie.
I have a question.
Sure.
And now that I have a written transcript, when Peggy said there's river frontage that's not protected, it's my understanding that the 990 property has road front, but nothing's ever close to the river, is it?
I'm not aware of any river frontage.
Across, across the river is all city property, isn't it? In front of.
On the other side of the river?
On the, on the other side of the road, on the other side of the road.
Oh, okay. My understanding.
That's in the, now, isn't it?
Yeah, my understanding, yeah, my understanding.
That's where we, we've seen several different maps, and a couple of maps don't show any of that.
My understanding, my understanding is there's, everything we own is. Is protected.
If it isn't, then I'm wrong, but I'd like to have that checked for sure.
We can, we'll clarify that.
Well, that's why I wanted, yeah, to ask about it, because in my head, the property just goes up to the road and then go to the river. I know there's river frontage as part of, I understand, but not 990.
Not unprotected.
I understand there's nothing unprotected, although.
I'll double check, thanks.
Kent County GIS reflects what that map says up there, too.
Yeah. I've always gone off Kent County GIS and, or read this to you. To my knowledge, everything we own along the river is protected, but I'll double check.
That's great, thank you.
The, the maps definitely, we're operating off a map from years ago, that's for sure, and it's confusing. I recognize that.
I, I also wanted to add that on page twenty-one, the Parks and Rec does put out on a map that it does speak of Scout Park as the official name of it and not necessarily the old name of it, so maybe we need to update our webpage, but at least on this document, it does.
I'll be honest, that's the first I ever heard of that until tonight, but I'll fix it. That's an easy fix. And that, I mean, when we migrated the old website to the new website, it just, everything carried over, so that had to have been there before. That was there before I came to town, but we can fix it.
Well, it's my intention to do later, but we can do it now since it's the direction we've taken. In order to give everybody a chance to speak and in order to help the council deem what the will of the people is, Susie, I'd like to have public hearings at the February twentieth meeting and the feder, what's that, February, March? March twentieth meeting regarding the 990 North Washington. Anybody, and we can, I'm hoping First Look will do notices in the ledger of the city, and let's give everybody a chance to come over and tell us how they feel in the interest of giving up. It's hard to assume everybody can come to one meeting and tell you what they feel about one item on one random Tuesday.
Brilliant idea, and I think it would be really helpful if we could have some copy of a definitive map. Maybe we could put up there or have here, so that if somebody comes with a question or.
That table is a terrific app, so I was gonna.
Sure. Andy, so we have a deadline that we have to meet to get the DNR Park plan, correct?
Yeah, it has to be uploaded to the DNR website by, uh, February first.
Okay, so if by chance, if the city council does take action to deem all of that property a park, park property after that date, we can always go back and re amend the plan, correct?
Correct, yes, so you can amend the plan the following year if you needed to.
Wait, I mean, could you even like six, you know, five months from now? Let's say, let's say, let's say in April, council decides. Was that?
Hockey, right.
Sure. They decide to deem that as park property, we can then in April just go and do it.
Absolutely, yeah. And I guess one thing I would add, I'm not super familiar with the discussion with respect to Scout Park, but when it comes to a lot of what the plan sets forward in terms of what you want to accomplish, I think that the plan is kind of like an enabling document, and so a lot of the goals and objectives are written fairly broadly. So even if it doesn't say do this or do that to this specific property, whether it's Scout Park or somewhere else, that doesn't preclude you from doing it anyways if it makes sense, so I guess pray that in mind as we move forward with this.
In other words, this is not a set in stone, have to follow it. It's not a, a city resolution, it's all a suggested guideline.
So you, I would say that you should follow it, but the language in here is broad enough that it's not pinning you down to very, very specific things. So when it talks about, you know, acquiring additional parkland as needed or preserving natural areas, you know, as be necessary, that gives you the flexibility to kind of make those judgment calls, you know, working with the Parks Board and acting to the residents of the community and so forth. So there's some intentional flexibility built into this thing that should help you move forward.
There's also economics that portrays a lot of the things that are in this, that there's just no way it's going to proceed tomorrow or in the very near future, because there's also long-term plans from financial, putting some data as well.
Yeah, and we don't know what opportunities are going to present themselves with respect to the action plan in the next twenty years or two years or five years, or maybe something that's maybe not as on, on the list. For some reason, you can make it happen, so you jump at that opportunity, even though it maybe isn't what you're planning after a year, and that's again, that's up to your discretion as to how you do that. But it is important, and when it comes to the DNR, this has to be done by February first, it's got to be adopted and in place for, you know, to start the grant cycle, which is on April first. And so the, the important part of this whole plan is, is to make sure that when you're pursuing private. projects, especially when you're going to have funding from the DNR or others, is that you are fulfilling and furthering the plan's goals and objectives as really what matters more than anything. So even though something might not be drawn with a hundred percent accuracy, even though something might not be articulated in exactly the way that, you know, everybody wants, as long as the goals and objectives are getting you where you want to go and they can show with a project that you're implementing that, then you should be fine.
Thank you. Any other questions for Andy?
Yeah, Andy, when you went through, when you went through the whole Parks and Recs, is it kind of like what we do on plan anymore, clean up language and make it flow better?
Yeah, I mean, there's certainly some of that, and, you know, this, I didn't do it as much of that, that this specific project, just because I wasn't as involved, but there are a lot of things in here that are similar policy-wise to what was in the previous plan, that's what you're asking.
Yeah.
So, yeah, some of it is, is just kind of cleaning up and things like that, some of it is also, you know, updating it, you know, because, one, because they have to, and two, because there are conditions that have changed in the last five years. There's different park improvements you've made, there's trail changes and improvements that have been made, grants have been applied for or received, so sort of takes everything that's happened in the last five years and incorporates into this document, and hopefully it sets out a path for the next five years.
Thank you.
All right, well, I think the Parks Board and Dan put a ton of work into this thing, and I'm happy to have both public hearings for the 990 property, and I appreciate the passion, but I, I can't see, with us being able to change it and amend it, I can't see holding up the whole thing, waiting on a cleanup and a manization and some public hearings and all the steps that are going to be necessary.
Because the public hearing part that you want to hold is more about the 990 property as opposed to the rest of our parks?
Yes, those two public hearings will be solely about the 990 North Washington property, but this five-year plan took a ton of work by the Parks Board and Dan.
I'd like to interject one thing. The reason the Scout Park, I'm going to not say Scout Park, I'm going to say 990 property was not addressed in here, because in the timeframe that they were working on this, there were tenants in that building. So they couldn't possibly deal with that situation in any kind of language here because nobody knew where it was going to end up.
I think it's also important to add that the property's not in the city limits, so you cannot put something in a park plan that's not in the city limits.
And also, it's fluid, we're not shutting the door.
Right.
We're getting opportunities for the rest of our parks by adopting this plan.
Can I add something to that, please?
Sure.
If you look at the goal number five was added as part of this discussion, because as you said, the property wasn't part of the parks, not part of the city, all that took into effect, but the Park Board didn't want to lose, lose sight of a potential development area or whatever it's going to be, and if there's a way to incorporate it into the plan, they added goal number five to consider designated undeveloped natural areas within the city for future park areas, and then the objectives that one they went through. So there's a lot of discussion on that part of it with help from Mr. Matthews, Mr. Schur, and Mrs. Schur, and a few other people. So it wasn't something that wasn't looked at, it was very much looked at, but also knowing that this is the body that needs to address 990 Washington, not the Parks Board, so that's why it was not included in there.
Good point. I'll just point out to second Mike's point, that at this last meeting, the council decided to vote to annex, and so we're proceeding with that process, and then when that becomes formalized, it'll be, you know, there's, there's no reason to rush it on, but the understanding that there'd be plenty of time for public participation to get to an outcome that the city deserves.
Very good, thank you. With that, and with thanks to the Parks Board and Dan, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 20, no, 223, the five-year Parks and Recs.
I'll support it.
Motion in the second meeting of the discussion. Sue?
Mayor DeMoor?
Yes.
Councilmember Soswehao?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, Lowell Township Water Advisory Committee, Mike and Marty.
The Joel Water Advisory Committee met on Monday, December 5th, 2022, for a continuation on the water plant expansion. Meeting was relatively short. The township acquired and if the city would be interested in the township buying in and forming a water authority. We discussed that the council, from our understanding, was not necessarily opposed. However, representation would need to be based on percentage of flow or units, and the city would not be interested in being less than a fifty percent representation in the authority. The township has mentioned several times regarding giving the city money to buy in to create the authority. To this date, the township has not provided an amount they would provide the city for a buy-in. The city has also expressed that we are only addressing the needs for the exclusive service area, which is primarily the area east of Parnell, south of Foreman, west of Alton Nash, with the exception of a couple residential areas in Prudence Township where we service, and along Fulton. We were asked to approach the city council to discuss if this was of interest, and Marty, am I missing anything?
Nope. Basically, we're going to have a meeting coming up here. If there's a certain direction you'd like to see it go, questions asked, we'd definitely bring it up.
This discussion that we're having right now is just water?
Correct.
Just water. They wanted to incorporate both water and sewer, and we informed them that, nope, we're going to do one, if this works out, we'll take a look at the other, but we're only talking water currently.
And at this point in time, only, only the service area?
Yes. Anything other than their service area currently, we would have to have a discussion on whether doing it differently, whether a 425 agreement or something to that effect, but this keeps them flowing water in their area.
Any idea what it costs to set up an authority?
I mean, it would be, would be legal cost, which probably a couple thousand dollars to do, but...
But mainly paperwork.
Correct. You know, but they would buy, they would buy in, they would give us an amount, they haven't disclosed that amount to us yet for where we could even decipher whether to, whether the amount that they're going to offer is something we would accept.
Yeah, and I would, before we do that, I'd like to take another look at the value of the plant, just make sure that everything was in it, right? So we're not asking for something and come to find out we're missing a big chunk, so because the plan itself is worth X. I truly believe that the infrastructure takes to do the plant is worth money, and I don't remember seeing that when we got, when we got our package, remember when we did an evaluation of all that? And I don't ever remember seeing...
Yeah, we only did the valuation of the plan.
Of the plan.
We only did the plan.
So there is, there is value to everything else.
Is that how evaluations are done for plant only?
In this instance, we looked at what the value of the plant was because they maintain their own distribution system, and we maintain our own distribution system. With the exception of a pump station that we send now, but, I mean, our, when you get into the underground with the pipes and all that, with the exception of the main trunk line, everything is ours, really, the discussion has always been that that's really not been part of the discussion because they have their distribution system, we have ours.
A couple of things for me. The, when the fire authority was set up, it was set up with equal representation from every municipality. I don't necessarily know that I would support that in this instance, I think it should be based off flow rate or customers, then you let the growth dictate the board makeup.
So you're saying that if the township outgrows the city, they can have more representation?
That they are equally bought in and they have the majority of the customers, I would think that that would only be fair.
Yeah, and that was brought up at the meeting.
My, my understanding was, my, and I could be wrong, my understanding was that the flow was going to dictate, you know, that they were...
Two fifty fifty?
Two fifty fifty, that's my understanding.
That's up to all of us.
Right, yeah.
But also, I'm not interested in the boatload of talent that's down there right now becoming authority employees.
No, they would be city employees.
At first, I liked what you were saying, and then I thought once we're further, if we own, if we own the water pumping and all that, we wouldn't want to lose controlling interest in the authority, would we?
No, probably, that's probably true.
Yeah, that's my, my...
So you can easily cut it at fifty, but I don't think it should start at fifty fifty. I would like to see those employees protected.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because the question was brought up, if, if we went on flow rate and eventually the township looks more, are we as a city willing to step back? That was the question that was brought up. It was a very short conversation, but that conversation was brought up, and I thought it created a unique opportunity to have a discussion with us along that certain line.
My initial answer would be a very short word, no.
I can't recommend you to ever give up less than fifty percent authority of that authority. I can never recommend that.
Not unless...
Unless they gave you like fifty million dollars.
But maybe you're... Or production end of it, instead of just, we're, we're putting more pipes down so we can grow.
Plus, you got to remember, too, that if you go outside that district, we're creating tax base for them that we're not getting anything from, which we're now, we're creating tax base for them that we're not getting anything from, which, right, that ship is already sailed.
But it's, you're talking only existing, right? Anything outside of that...
Currently, right now, we are only addressing, we are only addressing the service area, which is the area that I now...
My thing is, is we continue to make conversations and, and move forward with that, and then as time goes, if they need it elsewhere in the township, we come back and talk about that, but right now, just concentrate on the deal with what we have here for the present. Because I can't predict what happens, if it happens, or what, or what does this council look like when anything comes?
What I'd like to see is what their number is to us to start, start the thing, right? And then we can have a discussion, and you're not going to lowball us, we all know how that works, so I think it's in the next meeting, Mike, I think that's something.
I think that when we did the study the last time, I think the valuation of the plant, I mean, I could be wrong, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, I think it was about five or six million dollars is what they valued the plant at. Just the plant.
Yeah, so we have a five million dollar asset, we should get, I mean, they have a pump station, which is what?
No, we have, we have a pump station.
They don't even own...
No, we own, no, we own the pump station.
They don't even own...
They own their tower.
How?
They own their tower. We own, we, our pump station at G Drive that pumps them, or primarily to them, is ours.
So it's a...
Because we have that meeting next month.
February 27th.
Well, I think there's enough direction here tonight to at least take a step forward out of your next meeting.
I agree.
And then we're going to take their temperature on asking the question, right?
Yeah.
I know you guys were at the very first one.
If dialogue is good.
All right, new business, number A, side one, get 860 Hillside.
Good evening again. There's a new home that's, new home construction that's set to take place at 860 Hillside Court in the very near future. John and Susan Barnett are the proud owners of the property, good citizens of our community. They're requesting a waiver to the sidewalk requirement. Our city ordinance requires all new residential construction to include new sidewalk construction on the property. I'm looking at this property currently, there are no other public sidewalks constructed on Hillside Court. On Grindel, there is only one lot on the entire length of Grindel that had a sidewalk constructed on it, and the nearest continuous sidewalk that is connected to our system can be found on North Jackson Street near Grindel, and also on Jameson High. So there isn't any sidewalks, we're saying, anywhere up in that, that area. So when the record, the question came in, thought, well, if there isn't any other sidewalk, maybe now's a good time to put it in, but to hold, to hold coverage so that when the day comes to put it in, that we can get it in without issues with property owners, it'd be my recommendation at this time to allow the construction of the new building at 860 Hillside Court with a waiver for the installation, the new sidewalk at the time of construction, with the property owners agreeing to install new sidewalk at the property owner's full expense whenever the city determines sidewalks are to be installed at a future date.
If that future date is forever away, does it transfer if they sell the outside obligation?
I would say yes.
Or they would come back for another waiver because the property changed hands on the...
No, this, this would go with the property.
Okay.
This would be exempting them from the...
They were here, didn't they?
Yeah.
So are you good with that?
Yes.
And we have set a precedent, it's not to own a sidewalk just on the outside of town because of the cost and construction of it, to not have any ownership.
Yeah, part of the, part of the issue is, is that prior to my arrival, the, the city would just grant these exemptions, and I don't believe there's any ordinance provision that allows us to actually do that. The ordinance says it, but we, we bring these up to you on case-by-case basis, and we think it's probably a legitimate request to provide exemption.
Yeah, because I'm sitting on planning, when somebody comes to us and wants to do something, that's one of the top priority checklist items, is making sure the sidewalk is there and it's walkable. So...
He's a walk to, he just can't take a sidewalk.
Yeah. And Andy left, so Andy would have been the perfect comment to say a question to you.
He left on purpose.
I know he did.
All right, any other discussion on that?
I just want to point out that, excuse me, that when we talk about exemption or waiver, that, that hopefully also, who can help you with that, some documentation on that. I, I don't want to use the word exemption and waiver like too loosely, I understand the context that we're using.
I personally don't like the word waiver.
Right, okay, you know, so it'll be a condition, like a, like a temporary delay in the requirement of the sidewalk until such a time that the sidewalk is feasible in the whole neighborhood to be able to get somewhere.
The waiver term was used prior to my arrival here, I don't like that.
Yeah, we do that all the time in planning, we put it in as a condition of approval.
Exactly.
So this says waiver of the installation. I don't like that.
I don't think that we're presenting this, and frankly, if I'm wrong, Mr. Manager, as an, as an action item, I think just that the general sense is, is there, and you can tell me if you've done it differently in the past, and there's, there's good reason to keep...
When we have these requests, I bring them to the council so they can basically approve to not make them...